Good evening and welcome to the panel select board meeting on Thursday, February 11th, 2016. Special meeting with regular meeting to immediately follow. This is the regular meeting, right here. On the agenda today, we have minutes, warrants, mail, old business Vermont Land Trust, Donald Campbell, regarding the land acquisition on Mount Anthony Road, and new business and adjourned. What's your pleasure on the agenda?
Move to approve it.
Okay.
A second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, the minutes from, we have three sets of minutes to go over here. Minutes from 1:21, is that the one where I made the correction on?
No, it's in February.
Okay. What's your pleasure?
There's enough for approval tonight.
I'm sorry?
There's enough of a quorum for approval tonight.
Yes, yes, we got four. What's your pleasure on the January 21st minutes?
I move to approve 21st.
Okay, a second on that?
Second.
All those in favor say aye. Aye.
I don't think I was here for the 21st.
You're absent on the 27th, I believe.
Okay. Aye.
Okay. And read, is that an aye?
Aye.
Okay.
Yeah, you were absent on the 27th.
Approval of the minutes for 1:27?
There's enough for approval.
So moved.
So moved?
Second.
Second, all those in favor say aye. Aye. And?
You abstain.
You abstain.
And on that two, four, the minutes, February 4th?
Moved to approve.
That was last week.
Yep.
And there is one correction in there on the 4th, that Linda has. Okay, and?
A second.
Second it, all those in favor say aye? I'll abstain, as I was absent from that meeting.
Wait, me too.
Do you want to abstain?
Yeah, yeah, you were too.
So?
So you can't.
We can't approve those.
Nope, nope.
Can't approve two, four.
Nope.
Okay. Very good.
You're right.
Warrants?
So we'll table those.
Yes, we'll table the February 4th minutes till next Thursday. We have two warrants tonight. First warrant is from accounts payable in the amount of $7,125. The biggest item there was a payroll transfer and the SWIP payment, along with a Blue Flame The next warrant up is a payroll warrant from the dates of 2/7 to 2/12/16, in the amount of $5,695.79. Those are the two warrants. What's your pleasure on the warrants, gentlemen?
So moved.
Second.
Second, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
In the mail, we have a few municipal excess weight permits, so what I'd like to do is just go through and read them, and then you can approve them or deny them as you wish. The first one is for Carol Concrete and Newport Sand and Gravel in Newport, New Hampshire. The second one is from Barrett Trucking in Burlington, Vermont. The third one is from West Oil Company in North Adams, Massachusetts. And the fourth one is panel municipality uniform excess weight permit for the fleet.
Valco.
Valco, right. And those are the four that we have, so.
I move to approve.
Move to approve. Second it, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. You want to pass these around now, or do you want to sign them later?
Please do it now.
Okay.
You know how that goes.
Yes, I do. You don't trust me, Linda.
Well, did the wind blow up your way this afternoon? It breezed.
Over your way, that's part of my elementary run? Wow, they were like mini cyclones going around us.
I had to move the tractor and a manure spreader in front of the big heifer barn. Oh my God.
Blocked the wind off.
Just to break the wind.
Yeah.
They were huddled down to the low one at night.
Yep.
Just get ready.
That's what I've been doing all day today.
Three days of it.
Right then.
Actually, I just heard, they said that this weekend's supposed to be as cold as anything we had last.
Last winter, yeah, Saturday and Sunday. That's what the weather said at six o'clock.
With the wind chills and what's going on.
Maybe it'll knock the ticks back a little bit.
It did last winter.
That's true. It had a lot of snow last winter though.
Yep. Actually, they insulated it.
Yeah.
Yeah. That's why things didn't breeze up too bad.
Yeah.
Okay, those four are done. Also in the mail tonight, we have a letter here from Anthony LaCroy with regards to the road maintenance on Valley View Drive. The selectmen are in agreement with the choices the road foreman has made for safety of the town citizens. And this is to be signed by the selectmen.
Move to sign it.
Move to sign it.
It was already voted on. Yeah, it was.
Second, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Did that last week, didn't you?
Or the week before, yeah.
Last week, yeah. I know it was on the agenda that's why.
Also, we have from the Board of Listers, the state of Vermont, current use work that necessitated, the January request for the extension has been completed. The final 411 has been filed with the state. A copy is being supplied to you for your information. At this point, we request your signatures on the certificate. No appeal or suit pending. PVR 4155.08, in order to close the grand list for the year 2015, signed by Laura Dickinson and Barb Schlesinger. What's your pleasure on this, gentlemen?
So moved.
So moved?
Second.
Second, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
This is a letter from Santec, enclosed. Please find two copies of the authorization for additional services agreement for 2016. This work is to include landfill monitoring and reporting for both the spring and fall of 2016 sampling rounds. This agreement also includes laboratory analytical costs. We've kept our labor costs equal to last year. At your convenience, please sign and return a copy. And the amount on that, time and expense is based estimated at $9,000. This estimate includes the laboratory analysis. We have to do this to keep our transfer station legal with the state.
How often do we bid that out?
We can't.
We can't bid it out because?
There's only one or two.
Yeah.
You're stuck.
Yeah. So what's your pleasure on this, gentlemen?
Move to approve.
Okay. So those in favor say aye?
Aye.
One of those bills.
Necessary evil.
State ending.
Linda, do I have to also sign that? There's another page on here that says authorization for additional services. We have a letter from a panel resident. This is in regards to the agreement of the town has with Bennington Sheriff's Department. Watching past meetings, I've never seen reference as to what the sheriffs are doing and have done. I think it would be a good idea to have the representative from the sheriff's department speak at one of the meetings, and let the townspeople know what they are accomplishing. This would be helpful in the future when it comes to time to review their contract. And as a town resident, my taxes are paying for this service, so I'd like to see just what I'm paying for. I'm sure there are many other town residents who feel the same way. Thank you, I look forward to Joel Howard or Chad Schmidt on an upcoming meeting to address this matter. Warren Lozati. Rather than do that, because, you know, they have a schedule too, and it might not be feasible for them to come in every single month. Bennington County Sheriff's Department does provide the selectmen with a list of things they do. What I'd like to see, Linda, when this comes in, I think it'd be a good idea to post this on the website. This way?
When it's up and going.
Yeah, when it's up and going.
Is that a monthly list, Rich?
Yes, yes. This is a monthly list, well, actually, this particular list goes from November to January, okay? So we have asked the sheriff's department for a monthly update, so we're current on what the sheriffs are doing, okay? And it outlines everything they do, if you'd like to see that, that's my copy.
Does that correspond with their hours?
Yes, with the hours they're paid, right. So I'm gonna just make that suggestion unless?
Well, I think we plan on having them come in when we renew the contract, the following contract. We're under contract right now, the end of June.
Right, and they will be in, so.
Is there a revenue sharing with them, or do they retain it?
Yes, we've gotten a check in the amount of?
Oh, $600, I believe.
About $600.
Offsetting some of the expenses.
Exactly.
Yeah, for tickets on the set.
Yeah, and around town, fines, et cetera, so we are reaping that benefit as well. So again, this is a list that's provided to the select board. I'd like to see it.
It's here, it's here, if anybody wishes to come and see me at the office, it's here.
Okay, so you can also view it right here, and fingers crossed, it'll make the website. From the Department of Buildings and General Services, the state of Vermont, Office of the Commissioner. The 2015 General Assembly appropriated funds for a highly competitive grant process for the building communities grants program. This is to support municipalities and nonprofit organizations for capital costs associated with major maintenance, renovations, or development for the delivery of services to support Vermont communities. We are pleased to receive your application to the Human Services and Education Facilities Grant Program. Unfortunately, we aren't able to fund your request at this time, so we applied for this grant to help us out with the sidewalk and railings. It fit the criteria of the grant, but unfortunately, we're not getting funded for it.
End the row.
Yeah, we tried.
Right.
Yep. And this is from Ralph Mima, asking if there's been any movement in evaluating the solar projects that we've received. Green Lantern remains interested in a wastewater treatment plant project, and hope that their proposal is still under consideration.
Shouldn't we discuss that a little bit, because?
Well, I?
We send that to the attorney. The attorney sent back that he's not familiar with solar projects, so I think we should either find another attorney to look over the contracts. I think we did make a motion, but I think we discussed, we had in mind two different companies. One was interested in the transfer station, and one was the best deal for the wastewater treatment plant, so I think we wanted to move forward, but it just stopped because it went to one attorney and he wasn't familiar with solar contracts.
Uh huh. Okay, I don't know of any attorneys that, I mean, this is so new, that are?
Wouldn't that come up last week?
Qualified in this.
It's been a dead thing now for a month or so.
I mean, I know we want to move on it, and I know they want to move on it to?
Yeah, well, I know, we met him.
Get a bid open after that.
Things still?
Limbo with the state, right?
Still, yeah, things are still in limbo with solar projects as it is, and I would recommend that the board consider who they're going to get the most lease money from, because everything else is?
We did, but before we approved it, we wanted the attorney to go over it.
Right, took a look at the letter of a town.
Two proposals.
They're the two we want to go with, I think. They're the best, seem like the best deals.
Well, we talked about that.
Green Lantern is one of your proposals that you did send off to the attorney.
Right. Could we ask the league if they can recommend somebody, an attorney that's familiar with solar projects?
Well, how about if we asked the one we've been paying?
We have. He's not familiar with it.
Yep.
He replied back to you, January 21st.
Couldn't he advise?
Well, that's what I, I mean, it's a contract, you know.
Has anybody asked Bennington's selectmen if they've approached a lawyer or counsel on their project?
Where'd you find one of them?
Well, just throwing it out there.
We've had our?
It just seems funny that Peter didn't.
So?
Okay, let's, I make a motion to send our information, our contracts to Rob Ollett.
Let's just?
To advise us on?
Okay.
What we should do.
Second it.
All right, we have a motion in a second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Okay. Done deal. And Board of Selectmen, I am wondering what is being done with the TV at the office? If it's just being dumped, I would like it for my grandchildren to use with their Wii in my home, which is Ellen Stroemeyer, and I don't think I've ever seen that TV on.
Got a VCR built in there.
Yeah.
Yeah, that doesn't work so well.
Yeah. I don't see a problem with that, and plus it'd save us from?
It's got, it's gonna be going somewhere, so if she wants it, and you guys are okay with it?
Anybody want to make a motion on that?
Let her have it.
I'll make a motion to let her have it.
Do we donate the TV?
Second it.
Second it? All those in favor say aye?
Abstain.
You abstain.
I wouldn't want to give the family.
Yep, I understand. There was three ayes, so that was enough to carry. Okay, that is the mail. Old business Vermont Land Trust. How are you folks tonight?
Good.
Could you please identify yourself for the camera there, and?
Want to start, Matt, or shall I?
Sure.
Matt Gardner?
Marilyn Gardner.
I'm Donald Campbell, so I'm Southwest Regional Director of the Vermont Land Trust, and thanks for having us here tonight.
Okay.
I have some handouts, which I know you all need more paper in your lives, but everybody loves maps, so here's a map for you. And I thought it might be worthwhile, so we really have one piece of business here, which is to ask you whether or not conservation of a particular agricultural parcel in panel would be consistent with your existing town plan. So that's really the question that I, you know, I need answered. I don't need a lot more than that, but I know at your last meeting, from watching it on TV, that there was some question about public access and a few other things, so I thought it might be a good chance to touch base on that. And being on select board, I also know that there's not a lot of fun and games involved, so I'm gonna give you a quick little bit of fun and game here. And I see while you're looking at that map, how many of these properties that are conserved by Vermont Land Trust and panel you can name, all right, or you can point to. You don't have to tell everyone if you don't know, but there's the Armstrong property. Figured out that one, Keith Armstrong. There's the McMahon property, probably know where that one is. One that's not on the map is the Overstreet property. Yeah, you farm that, don't you? Yeah. Palmer, two parcels that are in Palmer, if I find those on Palmer Road. Panel Tannery, which is 735 acres. There's a project called Stevenson, which is, I think Barsadi's own that right now. And there's what's called UVM Burlington Farm, or Gardner Farm.
Gardner Farm.
Does everybody find them all? All right. And just to give you a sense, that's 2,182 acres. There's also a couple of nature conservancy projects that are in here, the ones that they have by the quarry and by the panel bog.
The quarry was one of the last ones.
Yes, that's right, yeah. But so, you know, Land Trust has about seven and a quarter percent of panel under easement, which is, you know, not, not bad. And just for reference, in Rupert or a really heavily farmed town, it's more like 14%, something like that, up in Shoreham or something, it might be closer to 25%, 28%.
You're right.
So it depends a little bit on, you know, how much of an agricultural community you're in. That's the kind of overview of where panel sits in conservation. So what's happened is that the gardeners have got under contract a property that's currently owned by Sylvia Conway, and that's the ortho photograph map that you have in front of you. And that's approximately 100 acre property, and they would like to purchase that so that they have more agricultural land for their farm. And in order to help them purchase it, we would like to use state funds, the Vermont Housing and Conservation Board funds, to buy the development rights, which is a little bit more than half of the value of the property. So rather not talk about specific numbers tonight, because it's their business and not everybody else's, but just in general terms, it's a little more than half of the value comes with the development rights. Vermont Land Trust has really a couple of different kinds of programs we do, and one is represented by the pink, the Panel Tannery, which is something where we will use Vermont Housing Conservation Boards to help towns acquire land for public access. So for trails, for hunting, for natural areas, for swimming holes, whatever it is, parks. We just did a park up in Bennington called the Wumsec Park, Headwaters Park. And so, part of what we do is really kind of parks and recreational areas. Another part of what we do is working lands, and that tends to be working farms and working forests. And there's, there can be some overlap. Sometimes there'll be a trail or something that goes through a farm, or sometimes there'll be a natural area that it's important to protect and whatnot. But for the most part, we're either looking at a recreational project, a sort of outdoor recreation project, or we're looking at a production project. And the rationale there is that quite often, if you have a farm, you know, you don't necessarily want everybody to have the right to walk through your crop fields at any time of the year. You have, you know, great crop going, and then some people come in and pack it all down for a picnic or something like that. It's inconsistent with the goals of making, you know, the farms more viable. So for the most part, we haven't pressed public access on farm projects. We've let them be about working lands, about affordable access to farmland, about keeping farmers owning their own farms, instead of what the gardeners have been doing all these years, having to lease the farm, but hopefully with the sale of development rights, they'd be able to buy the farm. So I just, I brought a couple of copies of the easement, and just so you know, they're 20 some odd pages of legal gobbledygook, you know, that it's not really, but it's all very important legal stuff, which they're signing up for. And it, the transfer of development rights does a lot of work, in terms of what they can and can't do on that property. The shortlist is that they can't subdivide it, and they can't put other residential development or other commercial development unless there's, unless it's related to the farm, or unless it's related to forestry. And so that's a very, very, you know, concise summary of this, of this document. But the one piece I would just read to you is the section 1A1, the very first paragraph in this, which says that consistent with the goals set forth in this, the grantor and the grantees in the United States acknowledge that the grant is acquired with its primary purpose being to protect in perpetuity the agricultural use and future viability of the protected property. The primary purpose includes the purpose of promoting the sustainable management of soil resources in order to facilitate active and economically viable farm use of the protected property now and in the future. So that's really what we're setting out to do with this purchase. And if we were to also purchase recreational rights on there, that would be an additional right that they were giving up, and we would need to appraise the value of that right as well, which we have not done at this point. So if you have a property and the whole public, anyone's allowed to go on at any time, that's got some value, and that would be something you would have to appraise. So I'll pass this around, and I don't know if either one of you want to speak to why you feel like you need the property, but maybe just a brief, you know, summary of the land security issues that we've talked about would help out a little bit.
The acquisition of this property would, like Donald said, would help the longevity of the farm and viability as far as going forward, for possible future generations to lock up cropland and retain the ability to farm at a profitable level, without having the fear of increased rents, new landowners coming in, external factors upon the agriculture community, as they may or may not be in the future. And the opportunity to work with the land trust, as far as purchasing the property, as Donald stated, at about half the value, works out very well for our situation. It gives us the opportunity to, in the short of it all, it gives us the opportunity to buy back a piece of farm that was in our family for many generations prior to my grandfather selling it, so that was another goal that we'd set forth for, for purchasing this piece of property.
Let me ask you a question, Matt. From this map here, it currently looks like it's agriculture now, is that correct?
Been using for 25 years.
You have been using, okay, I wanted to?
Been renting it for 25 years.
Okay. And what is this area over to the bottom left-hand corner, it looks like wooded area?
What there are, what's going on here, Rich, is you can see the fields. There's the high tension line coming through there, I believe that's the Valco line, correct?
It's Valco.
The Valco line does come through this piece of property, transfers over, goes on continuous east.
Do they maintain a right-of-way on that?
Yes, they do, yeah, which we make, we make sure that it's maintained in an organic fashion to retain our certification on the property.
And that would not change with this, correct?
That's right. Their right-of-way supersedes ours, it's already there.
Okay.
And they're really good, they know they can't go in there and spray. Actually, they, we sign contracts with them, and they call us up and say we're going to be going in there, and they go in and cut the brush, they don't spray anything. They've been really good about that.
What would you primarily be growing here?
It's just basically a hay crop at this point. We do some rotational corn in to rejuvenate the hay crop.
Any livestock?
That may be in the future, as far as, wait now, right now Paul Foster has a small herd of beef cattle on that pasture part of that, of the property. We'd shared the use of the property with Paul over the years. He's retained a pasture for his beef, and we acquired the crop part of it. So Sylvie has two tenants at this particular point in time. As far as we're concerned, there is no real pressing plan to put any cattle over there, but as the herd, as our farm, number of cows grows, it may become a necessity to put some animals in there, because we're geysered by lawful rules to acquire 30% of dry matter intake per animal unit through the grazing season. So they come down and they do a, they do an audit and a survey of the farm, and number of animals, acres of pasture, and condition, and everything like that, so if it does become necessary, it will also help in that, in that respect.
You know, I'm asking these questions because I'm trying to think of what the people at home might be thinking of, okay? I don't want you to feel that I'm?
No.
I'm picking apart things, okay?
It's good, it's good, yeah, bring it on.
You've been leasing this property for 25 years. In that time, have you had anybody? You've been, uh, leasing this property for twenty-five years. In that time, have you had anybody come up to you and say, gee, uh, I'd like to hold a family reunion here, or, uh, you know, uh, has anybody said, I'd like to, you know, bring my ATVs up in the wintertime?
No.
You know, snowmobiling? Has anybody said, gee, you know?
Never.
Never, okay, in the twenty-five years, and, uh, from my perspective, um, you people have been leasing this land for twenty-five years, and you've been doing agriculture in it. I, I might have a question if it was, uh, more wooded, you know, uh, timber rights and all that nonsense involved with that and, and, and streams. I don't see.
Well, there are some streams.
There are the streams.
Quickly list, while Henry's.
Because what I'm wondering is.
There's no fishing in the streams. There's nothing there.
There's nothing there.
It dries up in the summertime, early spring.
It's, it's basically.
It's a stream, it's not a river, it's, it's.
It's a wetland at this particular point.
Which is, we have to fence that off now, and it's fifty-foot right-of-way. We have the buffer zone.
Well, it's not a right-of-way, but.
Oh, it's a, a fifty-foot buffer zone from the NRCS, the Natural Resource Conservation. It's now telling all, and Henry will pudge for this, all the landowners that have water or any wetland, we now have to fence that off, no access.
Right, because of runoff and et cetera.
Correct, Henry, on this NRCS, this new program.
I thought we could get through that before he came back, because his, his blood pressure's going to go up.
Well, mine, mine was like, oh, the new program is fifty-foot buffer zone right from, anything that's wet or, or water. Anything, nobody. The cows can't go there and drink anymore.
That's what this white area is here.
I, I know, I know the problem.
That's a buffer, that's a fifty-foot buffer.
But it affects you, on your Niles farm, everything.
It actually, all told, with the, with the requirements that are, that are going to be instituted, it's a thirteen-acre restricted-use area, so it's, it, it amounts to thirteen percent of the property, which will be non, non-viable usage.
Because it gets kind of like wet, but it's not really a stream.
But it's not particularly, uh, valuable land in that it's, you don't get a lot of, uh, growth out of it, except that it's quite an expense to, to put the farm, the fence on it. So, you know, a lot of hassle with the fence.
Well, uh, and, and gentlemen, please feel free to jump in, but I do have another question. Okay, let's say, while this goes through, uh, what about building now? When I say building, you know, um, can you put like a sixty-by-a-hundred-foot barn up there?
There's a clause in the easement that allows for, there are a couple of clauses that allows specifically for, uh, one house to be built here with the idea that this could someday be its own small freestanding farm.
That makes sense.
Yeah, so, so, uh, and also in, in deference to grant list things, one dwelling. In this little zone here called the, uh, uh, complex.
Right.
And also within that, uh, any agricultural structures that they want to build could be built in there. So as long as it's agricultural.
But they can't, they can't go outside that boundary with building?
If they want to build an agricultural structure, they can only build a house in that complex area. It's, it's about the only sensible place in the property to build a house.
Because it's on the town road.
Town road and whatnot, but, I mean, except for the estate lots up on top. But, uh, if they want to build an agricultural structure outside of that complex, they can come to the Land Trust and ask for permission, and we, uh, would confer with NRCS, and we could eventually grant that permission, but there's more of a hassle factor.
What about the town? Would we be involved with that at all?
Everything they do has to go by town zoning, so, so even the house. If this, if the zoning doesn't allow the house, the house can't be built. So we're just saying, as long as the zoning, um, allows it, then we also will allow it. So one house, agricultural structures.
But you wouldn't do what you're doing tonight, in other words, to say, gee, all of a sudden we want to build a house, and you wouldn't have to come before the select board. It would just be the zoning administrator, et cetera, okay?
That's right, that's right, yeah.
Any other questions here? I mean, it's, it's agricultural land and, uh.
Well, I mean, we might, well, a couple of weeks ago, when this all came, it's been a month. Okay, that's probably been a month, okay. Actually, uh, the person that had quite a few questions is not here tonight. So, and the questions were very simple. Uh, they were, uh, was brought up, uh, hunting and, you know, that sort of thing. And, you know, it's, um, all, all my life I was, you know, this, uh, person that, uh, you know, got, uh, this is land and welcomed hunters, and I welcomed whoever wanted to come along, and believe it or not, things have changed. I didn't make that change. People made that change. Uh, they made that change because, uh, they were destructive. They, uh, four-wheelers, just.
Side by side.
Yeah, they just, um, they, they overpower you.
Let's face it.
And they have, I don't know, they, so I, I understand, because when you first started, you said, you know, you weren't buying recreational rights and da-da-da-da, okay? So, um, probably if you went back, uh, you know, I don't want to say how many years back. Okay, but, uh, uh, we didn't have wheelers, and we didn't have, um, uh, and people were trained, uh, the people that was hunting.
Respectful.
Was, well, yeah, but they were, they were local people that was hunting. Um, now they're coming from.
Everywhere.
Everywhere, didn't, you, okay, so I guess I, you know, um, it's too bad that, um.
Yeah.
I still couldn't be saying what I used to say.
You know what, though? Someone like you, and, and someone like these people are, are probably the most likely people not to post their land, uh, of anyone around.
Right.
And it tends to be somebody, um, who posts their land, you know, isn't, comes from somewhere else, and they're, and they're worried about it, and they feel an urge to post, and.
I mean, I know for a fact that.
If you don't have problems, you know, I, you know, but, but they come, I mean, it's, um.
Well, they do, and, and, you know, Gardner Farm is, is a, uh, just a wonderful piece of property up there, and I think Marilyn would bail me out on this one. I love to photograph things, and, and I just stopped by and said, hey, Marilyn is, okay? She's, Rich, take your truck right up, and, uh, you know, um, but it's the common decency of just stopping and asking the landowner what your intentions are, so they know who's on the land, at what time, and, um, uh, there's not a problem with it.
We have people that walk it.
Sure.
One couple, they walk constantly. They walk in the wintertime with snowshoes, if there's a lot of snow.
See, yeah.
And finally, I told them, I said, you really don't need to tell me every time you hear, because they live on the backside, and they walk. And a lot of people over on Hidden Valley Road walk over through the back way, and, you know, they just, you know, and actually, they'll let us know in the summer, we've got calves, and.
Right.
You know, they'll stop by and say, hey, you have a new calf over there, you know, which is really nice. And we don't mind that. It's just that people, you know, like Henry said, the four-wheelers and these new mud trucks and stuff like that.
Well, I'm a big fan of public access, and I do a lot to promote public access, you know? I do a lot of parks, a lot of recreation areas, but I do feel like in this particular situation, you've got to balance. And you want to leave just a little advantage to the landowner, in this case, the farmer, to be able to act against bad actors.
He has to be able to control that.
Yes, if there's a bad actor, they can take care of it, you know?
And I think that the, uh.
Anyway, I, I wanted to say that, that.
Yeah, they have established buildings in there now, that, you know?
No, there's nothing there.
It is worth saying probably that a little piece of the tubs exists down, you know, at the farm, but that's not quite on, yeah, so.
And actually, there's an old town road on the Skripak Road, I think it's called, is it, Henry?
Yeah, yeah.
That actually is the way that they used to come into the tubs, and that's still on the town books as far as, you know, that's Skripak Road. Which comes off of, um, is it Skipperie?
Skipperie, yeah, yeah.
From everything I've seen and known about the, uh, Gardner family, I, I personally think they run a class operation, and, uh, I, I, I don't have a problem with it. So what are you looking for us tonight? You looking for a, a vote here?
A vote and then a letter.
A letter.
Which would state that it was consistent with the town plan. It doesn't have to be, don't have to guang on, don't have to wax poetic, right?
Okay, so would somebody?
I make a motion to, to write that up.
Okay, second. Second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
That's great. Well, thank you very much.
Well, congratulations.
Thank you.
It's not over till it's over.
It's not over till it's over.
And one step closer anyhow.
But we've been trying for twenty years to.
Yeah, I know.
My father would say if he'd have done it when he was sixteen, we wouldn't be going through this.
Right, right, yeah.
But he was sixteen when his dad sold the farm, so, you know, he just, he wasn't old enough to take the farm, you know?
And, and remember also.
It was a different world.
It was cheaper, but I don't, I don't, I don't remind him of that often.
These guys are going to take good care of their property.
Well, I'm sure they will.
If anything comes up in the future that is recreational, that you, that Poundle feels strongly about, you know? The Vermont Housing Conservation Board wants to help communities, like we did at the, at the Woomsack Park, so.
Matter, matter, I don't know, maybe, um, if you've got some property, matter of fact, uh, somewheres I read that, um, now they're, um, if, if somebody wanted to, um, have, um, hunting rights and so on, I guess I, um, there's money available for people to lease out for that, and so on.
We have a lot of people that come, Bud Baker for one, you know, Baker's brother, he's hunted there for years and years and years, and, and we did put up a few posted signs because they were starting to drive and take the cable down and driving in the field, and he called me up. Well, he didn't, Ricky called me up and said, gee, my dad's been hunting there for years. I said, you know what, go for it, but he's, I wanted to ask, and I said, that's fine. You know, and then another guy, Matt, was over there doing something. A guy from New York State had parked, and he wanted to know if he could, sure, but, you know, just ask.
Asking is a very nice step, you know?
Well, there's certain parameters that you like to play.
Ours got, ours got a lot deeper than that, so.
Well, congratulations. Good luck.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
I hope everything turns out right. Yeah.
I keep an eye out for your cows every morning.
You might keep an eye out for you.
Only last year. They're being good this year. But I used to call Burke and tell him.
Okay, good night now.
Yeah, good night.
Okay, that brings us to new business. Any new business to be brought up tonight?
I just had a question on Bruce Richardson. Were we able to get ahold of him?
Yes, I was able to get ahold of him, and he will be issuing a letter to the board very soon. He currently is in, up in Montpelier doing some work. But he will respond to the board and come in at some point, but he has some, some thoughts on the woodlands.
Great.
And some other partners. It's nice when we go in to do a timber harvest, if other landowners join in.
Anything else? I want to entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Thank you very much.